Good afternoon and welcome to the May ninth, two thousand twenty-three Planning and Zoning Meeting for the City of Apopka. If you'll please stand and join me for a moment of silent prayer and the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We have a public comment period. Each item on the agenda will have an individual period for public comment. If there is anyone here who has a public comment that is not on tonight's agenda that is planning and zoning related, now would be the time to speak. Seeing none, we'll move on. Item number one, Comprehensive Plan, Small-Scale Future Land Use Amendment. Mid Florida Freezer Properties, owners Mid Florida Freezer Properties LLC, applicant, Lowndes Law Firm, care of Logan Ospal Esquire. Location, southwest corner of US four forty-one and Lakeview Drive. Ms. Sanchez.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This request is, this is a request to recommend approval of the Future Land Use Map Amendment for Mid Florida Freezer Properties from commercial to industrial. Subject properties are located on the southwest corner of US four forty-four, four forty-one Lakeview Drive, approximately four point eight eight acres. The proposed future land use designation of industrial is compatible with the area due to parcels on the south and west of the properties having the future land use designation of the same. This application is also being processed simultaneously with an application to rezone the property from commercial to industrial, which is the next item on the agenda. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to find the proposed change in future land use from commercial to industrial, consistent with a comprehensive plan and land development code, and recommend approval of the Future Land Use Amendment based on findings and facts of the staff report and exhibits. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff? Is the applicant here and do they have a presentation? Name an address for the record, sir, please.
Good evening, Logan Ospal, Lowndes Law Firm, two one five North Heola Drive. Thank you, Jean, for the background. I'll just simply add that we're in agreement with the staff recommendation. This is the industrial corridor, of course, of the city. We're proposing this rezone and small-scale comp plan amendment to industrial light. I will note that it was previously zoned industrial and had the appropriate future land use. I believe this was rezoned for the purpose of a gas station. That's not what's being proposed here today, and instead, we are requesting the light industrial. I have representatives from the developer here today with me, as well as the project engineer, but I'm happy to answer any questions related to the rezoning.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone have questions of the applicant?
No, sir.
Sir, thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, that's something, oh. Yes, sir. Please come to the rostrum. Name an address for the record, please, sir.
My name's Garrett Daniels. I'm three oh one, Lake Annie Drive. I've been there for twenty-something years, and the lake that is run up and around that area right there, yeah, that lake right there, I've been there for twenty years, and that lake is at the highest it's ever been. The only thing I'm worried about is the runoff. That lake cannot handle any more runoff with all the, especially with them fixing the highway right there and clearing it. And the lakes used to be connected, they're no longer connected. So, the only thing I'm worried about is the lake with the runoff. It cannot take anymore. Our dock is literally underwater, and to get in, our property is, if you follow the two roads down to the Y, we're up and around the corner of the back bend of it. The past two years, getting in and out of our property, you needed a almost four-wheel-drive truck to get in and out because it has been underwater. That's all I got to say.
All right, thank you, sir. Would the applicant like to respond?
I, I think staff would be, would be helpful too in a response, but we have had ongoing discussions with them. We've gone to DRC. I believe this is a closed basin, and we've already accounted for stormwater runoff. That's going to be part of site plan approval. That's something that the staff's all over as well, so we're mindful of that, and thank you for that feedback.
Is any of the runoff directed towards the lake?
I do believe we have a topographical survey, and I can get you an answer to that question. My understanding is that portions of the property do run towards the lake on the south end, but it is all upland, and I would need to confirm on the topo. But again, that is something that staff is certainly aware of, we as developers certainly aware of, and it's something we will need to account for in our site plan.
I understand. Any questions? Yeah, so once you develop that site, all the water is going to stay on the site, there's going to be no runoff.
My understanding is that's the staff requirement.
That's correct. That's a requirement in our land development code.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
No, sir.
Sir, thank you. All right, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Please give us your name and address for the record.
Yes. I'm Marjorie Mickelson, and I live at three three five Lake Annie Drive. I'm the ninth house on the lake. My parents bought that house in nineteen fifty-four, so I've been there a while and familiar with it. That lake is part of the Florida aquifer. As a kid, swimming in that lake, we would swim over the spring water bubbling up. So, we've got now runoff from four forty-one when they put in walkways and all, and that runoff is going straight into the Florida aquifer. We don't need anything else going into the aquifer, number one, and number two, how much truck traffic is going to be generated in and out of that property? Because that Lakeview Drive cannot handle a lot of truck traffic. Are you going to put in turn lanes? Are you widen the road? Whatever. It's just, it, it's not capable of handling a lot of truck traffic. And I know, I came out of a trucking family. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
The, the site plan and the truck, any, any type of traffic items, those will be handled at the site plan review time. We don't, we don't have the, those, the, the background information for that. However, we are looking at Lakeview Drive, and more than likely, there will be a turn lane put in at that traffic going north, so.
I understand, thank you. Is Lakeview Drive, is that a county road or a city road?
I believe that's a county road. That's always the fun part is working with the, making sure the, initial, initial conversation, though, has been positive regarding that, though. And we do have the, the road right of ways there. The only problem is, on the southeast corner of the intersection, there's a, there's a drain there that would cost a bundle to, to, to change, so we're looking at just basically moving the road over to the west a little bit.
Because, I mean, I've been down that road several times, and as I recall, it's not up to city standards.
No, it's not. That's, that's part of the, that's part, that, that'll be part of the site plan improvements.
Yeah, so we can't have truck travel on a road that's not up to city standards?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, bring it back. For a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to find the proposed change in future land use from commercial to industrial, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, incompatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the Future Land Use Amendment, based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Stanley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two, Change of Zoning, Mid Florida Freezer Properties LLC, owners Mid Florida Freezer Properties, applicants Lowndes Draw Law Firm, care of Logan Ospal, southwest corner of US four forty-one, Lakeview Drive.
Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is the companion rezoning application to the Future Land Use Amendment in your previous adj, in the previous item. This is a request to recommend approval of the change of zoning from C C O R, Corridor Commercial, to I L Light Industrial for Mid Florida Freezer Properties. The subject property, as I said, is four point eight acres in size. The northern portion of the properties currently, of the property currently house a industrial warehouse and retail uses adjacent to US four forty-one and Lakeview Drive. The I L Light Industrial zoning is compatible with the future land use designation of industrial, and properties on the west and south have the same zoning designations as well. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff? Questions of the applicant? Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't see any issues with this zoning request because the, the staff has already said they'll address the issues brought up earlier with the roads and the drainage. And also, I've been in those buildings, and they're, they're pretty rough shape, so it'd be kind of nice to see something else go in, in there on this property. So, I'm fine with making the motion if anybody else doesn't have discussion.
Nope.
So, I move to find the proposed change of zoning from C C O R Corridor Commercial to I L Light Industrial, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning based on the findings and facts presented in the staff reports and exhibits.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Dumey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stanley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item three, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, text amendment, policy three point one H dot I I, Future Land Use Amendment Map one dash one A dash seven fifty and nine twenty-two Plymouth Sorento Road. Owners, Peggy G Carlton Living Trust, one half, Gary D Carlton Living Trust, one half, and Gary D Carlton Living Trust. Applicants, Lowndes Draw Firm, Law Firm, that's twice I did that, Jonathan, care of Jonathan Hules, seven fifty and nine twenty-two Plymouth Sorento Road.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of the amendment to policy, to Comprehensive Plan Policy three point one H I I, High Density Residential, and map one point one point A, and recommend transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Development. The properties are located west of Plymouth Sorento Road, south of South Fork Road, and east of State Road four twenty-nine, approximately thirteen point zero five acres in size. Seven fifty Plymouth Sorento Road has a future land use designation of commercial and within the C C zoning district, while nine twenty-two Plymouth Sorento Road has a future land use designation of agriculture and within the T Transitional Zoning District. The H D R twenty-five Future Land Use Designation was established under ordinance number two seven four seven. It was adopted by City Council on May twenty-six, twenty twenty. The H D R twenty-five Future Land Use Designation is based on ongoing development, development trends and market demands for multifamily development, and particularly multifamily, multi-story apartment buildings, as the need exists for higher-density residential development, where transportation facilities and infrastructure show the potential to support this density increase and compatibility with the areas demonstrated. The applicant intends to construct a multifamily development with a proposed density, density of nineteen dwelling units per acre, therefore requesting to amend the said policy and the The applicant is requesting to extend the boundary of map one dash one A of the com, Comprehensive Plan to make the subject properties eligible for H D R twenty-five, High Density Residential twenty-five Future Land Use Designation. The Future Land Use Designation is compatible with the area, as parcels on the north of the subject properties are within the delineated area eligible to have the same Future Land Use Designation of H D R twenty-five. They are also in prox, in close proximity to the Floridian Town Center on the northwest, of which comprises a mix of commercial and high-density residential uses. Additionally, an approved high-density residential development slated, slated to have five hundred sixteen units within unincorporated Orange County is located towards the northeast of the subject properties. This application is also being processed simultaneously with an application to amend the Future Land Use Map from agriculture and commercial to H D R twenty-five, which is the next item of the agenda. I do want to correct the record, and I'll do so after the meeting as well, that one member of the Development Review Committee, the police chief, believes that the proposed is not consistent with the surrounding area because of these, because across the street is single-family residential. He's also issued the following statement, and I'll read it to you. Additionally, the intersection of Plymouth Sorento Road and Orange Blossom Trail is already a mess, and is not able to deal with the growth Plymouth Sorento is currently experiencing, changing this density would create a traffic impact, traffic impact to the already busy road and intersection, which is also impacted by Highland Avenue, which intersects too close to the intersection. The rest of the DRC members did not object to the applicant's request. The recommended motion from the Community Development Department is to find the proposed change in future land use designation from commercial and agriculture to H D R twenty-five compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, subject to, I'm sorry, the recommendation is to recommend approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Future Land Use Element Text Amendment, to make, I'm sorry, and, and map one dash one A. Sorry, map dash one, one dash one A, to allow properties to be eligible for the H D R twenty-five Future Land Use Designation. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff?
I do. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so, you know, there's a lot going on in this application. So, there, there's a map that's, that shows the, was it map one point?
One dash one A.
Dash one to one dash one D. All right, so, it's running from Orange Blossom Trail, part of it anyway, all the way up to Schlokey, and that's just for reference. That's this map that you're referring to.
That's the current adopted map for that area that's permitted to be eligible for H D R twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay. All right, so even though this project is a subset within that map, so this is just a, you know, just for us to know that this, it, the request would be satisfactory in this particular area. That's the point you're trying to make, right?
Correct.
Okay. Now, also, was it just for our information? In this application, you also had numerous pages for the City of Apopka Comprehensive Plan for two thousand thirty. I think I was attached to this.
Right.
Forgive me if I'm wrong, but.
No, no, you're absolutely right. There was a, that's, for your reference, that was the text amendment that was approved in twenty twenty by City Council. So, it's actually ordinance two seven four seven, which is what exactly we're try, that the applicant is trying to amend.
Oh, that's what's being amended?
Yep.
Okay.
To that ordinance.
Okay, so that's the reason why it was pertinent to our decision to make.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
Any more questions of staff?
I just have one question.
Commissioner, no.
Regarding the comment that you read.
I'm sorry?
The comment that you read. I didn't hear who you said that was from.
Yes, ma'am. That was from the police chief.
The police.
Police department, yep.
Okay.
I have a question, Jean. The, the initial property that, that is delineated under the existing map, what's the total acreage of that?
I, I honestly don't remember. It was, it was back a few years ago. Yeah, we had, there was, there was four dis, four district maps that were included as part of that amendment to increase areas that, that staff and City Council felt that could support the twenty-five dwelling units per acre. This, again, is, you know, adding a, a section onto that, yeah.
Okay, I, I get it. All right, thank you. Anyone have any more questions of staff?
Yeah, I, I got one, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. [inaudible].
I wanted to thank you for including that Future Land Use Element. That was very instructive, and I think it was good to understand the historical context behind the way some of these changes were made. And furthermore, I'm glad that the projection for the population was overly optimistic because our traffic is pretty bad sometimes anyways, and it would be really bad if those numbers were correct, so, thank you.
We're in the process of updating our comp plan, so that might change slightly.
All right. The applicant have presentation?
So, always a little awkward when I follow Jean. I never, you know, quite fit in her shoes either, so. Good evening, Chairman and fellow commissioners. My name is Jonathan Hules, two fifteen North Heola Drive, Orlando, Florida. Appreciate the presentation made by Jean. I will note that this project encompasses not only this public hearing before you now, but the one, the next one on the agenda, and it is the initial step in what will be a multi-step process in which more details come with each of those steps. But for purposes of today, we wanted to present to you what the end game was and what the developer, my client, one eleven residential, wants to build on this site. And as part of that, we're going to talk about a couple of items, including, I think, a very important one, access, transportation generation. And I think if the police chief was here, I don't see him in the audience, I, I think this would be informative to him. We actually had a meeting with planning staff and walked through this, these items with them, and I think satisfactorily addressed their concerns, as well as Pam Richmond's, the transportation coordinator for the city, and that's why you don't see any objections raised by those departments. And I don't think at the time, and I know actually that at the time that the police chief made the comments at the DRC, that he did not have this information. So, I will continue with my presentation. Just to orient everyone, I know everyone's Apopka residents very familiar probably with this site, but it is located in the northeast quadrant of Orange Blossom Trail and four twenty-nine, actually straddles the four twenty-nine right of way. This just gives a general look from kind of the ten-thousand-foot view, just to, to show that the, the property is, in fact, in an area with a confluence of many different uses, including industrial, commercial, single-family residential. They all kind of come together at this hub of, of, of the four twenty-nine and, and Orange Blossom Trail. As Jean mentioned, the, the, the majority of the property today has a commu, commercial future land use designation. The northern part is agricultural, and it's, the most recent use was for a greenhouse operation. Idea would be with, to bring both of these in and assign that H D R twenty-five designation. And this is the zoning map, as Jean mentioned, it's, it's community commercial for the, the majority of the site with a transitional kind of holder zoning designation for that northern parcel. And I think it's an important context to keep in mind while we're talking about this project, is we're not talking about taking an unentitled parcel and giving it, assigning it brand-new entitlements. We're talking about a majority of a site that is already entitled, and someone can come in today and submit a major development plan and just be dealing with site planning exercise to build commercial here. The, the parcel is, this, this, this just shows kind of, and let me see if I can, if this, oop, that didn't work. Is the laser on the top?
Right on top.
Oh, yeah, okay. So, here's the overall site. This shows it's the two tax parcels. You have the Apopka mower property here bounding to the south. You have the Sunoco at the corner of, of Plymouth Sorento and O B T, and then you have Plymouth Landing Subdivision located immediately across the street. You have the connector road to the four twenty-nine interchange, just to the north. And then you have the raised elevated roadbed of four twenty-nine, and based on our to, top, review of the topographic maps, that's, it's about twenty-five feet above this property. Here's the conceptual site plan of the project. So, what is being proposed is a multifamily project that would consist of two hundred and fifty units, so that's, comes out to be about nineteen dwelling units an acre. We have to seek the twenty-five dwelling, the H D R twenty-five, because there isn't a designation that, that would fit this project perfectly. But it's going to be, would be two hundred and fifty units, and it would be nineteen dwelling units an acre. The, the principal structures would be four-story, they'd be centrally located on the property, and they'd be clustered together. Within them, there would be kind of a, oop, that's not what I wanted to do, a central courtyard here, which would have the pool and the other amenities of the project. What this, and then on the outside of that would be your parking, and then there is, you know, obviously, it's a conceptual plan, but there would be some garages that would be located between the parking and the actual outside of the prop, project. What's important to note here, this is the site plan we shared during our community meeting that we had back in January. The clustering of this building is, what allows it to do is really push the development to the interior of the property, and it allows you to achieve much larger setbacks than it would be if it was made up of, spread out across the property and with three or Of note, there is also two access points proposed as part of this project. One on Plymouth Sorento, and this is the one we're really excited about, and I think really is the game changer here that makes this project work, is that there would, we're talking both with, well, it's almost a four-party conversation, three-party conversation between C F X, F D O T, and the city to have access to the existing signalized intersection at Orange Avenue. And we are committed to making that happen. We don't think, and I think that's going to be a standout point versus what can be done with the property today with someone that's going to build it as commercial, doesn't have to jump through all the hoops that this project's going to in order to be developed. So, we're here at the table, we're here negotiating, we're here wanting to make this a reality, and I think because of the process, we, you know, the city can demand that we do these kind of things. Here is a conceptual site plan that's been updated. It's pretty much the same layout, but I like this, this, although it doesn't have all the color the other one does, it does two things. It shows a updated configuration for this dedicated, direct, exclusive, signalized access point on O B T, and those changes were born out of feedback we've received from both C F X and F D O T. And it also shows how it, this would interplay with the Apopka mower, who has access today. We would have to make some changes to his. We would have to make some changes to his access, likely provide him some additional parking as part of that. This site plan also shows some of the off-site improvements that would be made on Plymouth Sorento for this project, which would include both dedicated southbound right-turn lanes and northbound left-turn lanes. And another item that's distinguishable about this... What's this proposed project versus what could be done here today is that this developer is willing to dedicate 30 feet of right-of-way for the future Plymouth Sorento Road widening. They would do that as a donation, not receive any sort of... Or demand any sort of compensation, impact fee credits, or anything for that. Here's a conceptual elevation, a viewpoint from Plymouth Sorento looking in from that access point that I highlighted earlier of the four-story buildings. These are conceptual elevations at the clubhouse, but I will tell you that they recently were shot and taken from a... Another project that 111 Residential had just finished constructing in Polk County in Davenport, and the clubhouse would have similar features. So they are known for the quality of their work and really the high-end amenities that they provide. On the left is a typical... And this was taken from that Davenport project of a typical interior of one of the residences. And on the right is the actual pool that was built there and would be of similar quality involved with this project. This is a cross-section line of sight to just demonstrate how these buildings would lay out with respect to the Plymouth Landings community. As I mentioned before, having a four-story project consolidated into buildings that kind of wrap around a clubhouse allows you to centrally locate those buildings and really provide a enhanced, lengthier setback in the building. So if I kind of walk you through this, here is where the frontage of the building, as in Plymouth Sorento Road, just for reference, would be right here. And so you would have building, you would have landscaping and parking here. One of those parking garages, if it was illustrated here, would go right around this area. And then you run into, you know, and if there isn't a parking... I'd say parking garage. Parking... Yeah, parking garage. If it's not there, then it would have some landscaping. You would then have the 30-foot right-of-way dedication. That would be a placeholder for when the Plymouth Sorento is four-lane, which is going to happen at some point in the future. We don't have the crystal ball to tell you the specific date, but that's going to happen. And then the existing Plymouth Sorento right-of-way followed by the rear resident... You know, there's several houses in Plymouth Landings that has rear yards that would front on Plymouth Sorento. This one happens to show a pool cage. They don't all have pool cages. I think a few of them do, some don't. But what this demonstrates is that from structure to structure, from residence to residence, over 240 feet would be the setback. And that is well above and beyond what the code would require. But we went to a community meeting. We were already sensitive to knowing where this project was going to be located. We understood. We wanted to get the residences as far removed from the front of that property as we could and separate them from the existing Plymouth Landings community. We think we've done that. We think this is well above and beyond what the code would require. And obviously, with using some of the existing landscaping that's... Trees that are in the right-of-way that'd be dedicated and some enhanced buffering beyond that, we could really make the two uses compatible. Here's a line of sight. You know, this is conceptual, obviously, from one of those four-story balconies looking towards Plymouth Sorento Road. In the forefront, you see that it's be one of those garage buildings that were shown on the site plan. And then beyond that, in that tree canopy would be the Plymouth Landings community. Here's an important note, and this is straight from the ITE trip generation tables that are utilized to evaluate the trip generation of proposed developments. Today, the majority of the site has commercial entitlements in which someone can come in and submit a major development plan, prove they meet the city's code requirements, and develop the site. At its max, if you took a 0.2 floor area ratio and applied it to the acreage and just did the math, that yield is about 135,000 square feet of retail commercial. We ran some numbers. We didn't use that. We thought that was a little unrealistic. Don't know if we've been able to achieve with being able to park it and doing stormwater and all that. And so we used 100,000 as a model. And when you compare 100,000 square feet of retail commercial versus the 250 residences that we're proposing, there's almost a 90% reduction in both the total daily trips that would be generated from the use and almost 90% of the PM peak, which is that critical time hour in the evening and afternoon when the roads see the most traffic. And so that's demonstrated here. I'll just walk you through it real quick. That reduction's shown here, just simple subtraction in here. So here's your PM peak hour reduction. Here's your daily trip reduction. So almost 90% difference between a 250-unit residence and if this project was built according to its existing entitlements. When you add this all together, just a comparison between the two, existing commercial, like I said, they go straight to a major development plan. What we're proposing, it's a multi-step process. I have a timeline. I'm going to show you. It's a conceptual timeline, but it shows all the steps we'll have to go through and all the proofs we'll have to make along the way that we're doing everything we're saying here. If you do the strict math, 142,000 square feet of commercial is what the yield is today. We're proposing that 250 multifamily residences. Existing commercial, they can come in today and say, we're going to do one site, one access point off of Plymouth Sorento, not go through the work that we know is needed to achieve for our project, and work with CFX and FDOT and the city, and potentially Apaca mower to get access directly onto Orange Blossom Trail at that Orange Avenue signalized intersection. This is just taken from the code, but the existing commercial front yard setback is 10 feet. We... As I mentioned before, this is actually an underselling of it. Our site plan would be 130 feet to the existing Plymouth Sorento Road frontage. And in totality, it's larger than that when you reach over to the Plymouth Landing subdivision. Existing commercial, they come in. If they can demonstrate that they have... Meet minimum code buffers as part of their major development plan, then they check the box there. We are knowing we have to propose and would propose and would build enhanced buffers within those larger setbacks. And then, of course, you have this 30-foot right-of-way donation, which furthers the goal of one day Plymouth Sorento Road's going to look different than it does today. These type of donations is really what accelerates those projects when they're ready to be built because the local government, whether it's the city or the county, doesn't have to spend time obtaining the necessary property to build that road. They can go straight to road building. So this is my kind of check-the-box in comparison between the two. Traffic, a 90% reduction, as we said, from what could be built there as a realistic development program for commercial. We think the proposed residential is more beneficial. In terms of access, you would be looking at, if developed as a commercial project, a single access on Plymouth Sorento. If this project, as we discussed, would do... Would secure and open that access onto OBT at the Orange Avenue on the signalized access. So we believe that's more beneficial. Setbacks, 10 feet code minimum versus 130. Buffers, code minimum for existing commercial, enhanced buffers as part of this project. We think all that in totality, you have more compatibility with the surrounding area than its existing entitlements today. And then, of course, that 30-foot right-of-way road designation. Real quick, just to highlight this. This is the initial step in what is going to be a lengthy, multi-hearing process, not only before this board, but before City Council. We had our community meeting in January. It was well-attended. I think it was collaborative in a lot of ways and a lot of information shared. I think there's some folks here today that probably were on that virtual meeting, and I'm interested to hear their comments. But today, we're here at this public hearing for the transmittal. The next stop is City Council on June 7th. They'll be reviewing these same applications. If it's approved there for transmittal, then what that means is we get to continue the process. It goes up to the state, gets state review, and then it gets sent back down. And in that meantime, the developer will be working on their rezoning application, and that would come before you. We project late summer, fall 2023. And then everything marries up, this comp plan process and the rezoning, in the fall with public hearings before the City Council. That would be two of those. And then major development plan would follow. And that's another public hearing before this board and the City Council. So everything we're saying we're doing, you get to check and make sure we're doing. And we're putting representations on the record. We're going to live to those representations and want to be held accountable, you know, accountable for them. So with that, happy to answer any questions. Just would ask for the opportunity to address any comments, concerns expressed during public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Hues. Anyone have questions of the applicant?
I do.
Commissioner Washington.
Okay. It's nice that the developer is going to provide an additional 30 feet of right-of-way. I think you said that. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Now, how's that going to affect the gas station? How's that going to affect the post office? And how's that going to affect the private homeless at the intersection of the Connector Road and Plymouth Sorento Road?
So we don't control any of those road frontages. We can only...
Because he's the one asked the question.
Right. So we can only convey what we own, would own and control, and it would just be these frontages. So in the future, the city or the county, whoever's going to be completing this road widening, would need to go to those property owners and secure that right-of-way from them. Whether that be through a voluntary donation, as being what's offered here, or some other more involved process, is yet to be determined.
Okay. So obviously, you don't have control over that. And who knows what would happen with those properties I got finished telling you about? We don't know, do we?
What was the question, sorry?
We just don't know, do we?
About...
Well, what happened to the pieces that you don't control?
Correct.
You just don't know.
Yep, correct.
That's good. I'm glad you said that. Now, the special access from your property to Plymouth Sorento Road over by the Apaca mower?
Yes.
That's a nice piece, yes. There's a stoplight there now. Will that stoplight control this flow of traffic to your property?
Yes. Signalized access.
Same light? Okay. That's good. All right. The... You had a community meeting with the subdivision across the street?
We did, in January.
I was just curious. Unless there's some other people in this room right now that live in that community, I'm just curious to hear what they have to say. That there's to be this nice property right next door to their nice homes. I just wanted... What did they say?
Oh, well, you know, I think candidly, I think there was questions and concerns about the project. And I think anytime, in my experience, that's not uncommon when you're taking a property that currently is undeveloped, right? It is... It's not as if we're taking a shopping center today and converting it to another use. Change is sometimes causes concern, raises questions when you're taking a... What's a tree-lined property today and proposing to do a different use with it. I think those same concerns, you know, would likely be raised if any use is made of this property, but specifically, there were concerns with potential compatibility. I'd submit to you that I think a residential project that spins off 90% less traffic than what can be developed as a commercial project there today is more compatible. There was concerns expressed about existing conditions of the roads, and I think being able to provide this secondary access, direct access onto Orange Blossom Trail via an existing signalized intersection is a game changer. I think it relieves a lot of that pressure that could otherwise be felt down here at the existing Plymouth Sorento Road and Orange Blossom Trail intersection if there was just a single access, which a commercial project can come in today and do, because all you'd be doing, all the city would have is a major development plan to deal with. And here, as I just stepped through, we have a lot of steps to go through and a lot more discretion of the city involved with our project, and we know that.
Okay. The other thing would be the access from Plymouth Sorento into your property. It looks like that's the major entrance way and exit. The one on 441 is there, but it's more like a secondary or minor access to 441. Being a frequent driver of Plymouth Sorento Road going to gasoline, that road can be hairy. So I'm just visualizing when, you know, these nice people move into your property and they're, you know, they're leaving to go to 429 or down to our beautiful city center is just going to put more traffic on that road. What do you say about that?
Yep. Any use of this property is going to put more... And like I said, the analysis is, it's commercial today. We're not taking something that's raw and untitled land. Someone could build it today. And we think, to your point, what our traffic modeling shows is that most of the traffic that's going to enter or an exit off of the Plymouth Sorento Drive is going up here to the Connector Road, and they're getting on the 429. Now, if we only had a single access, anyone that wants to go south would have to come out here. We believe and think that what's going to happen is folks that want to... They're not going to want to deal with this intersection. They're going to come to their own stoplight and get out on OBT over here and not have to... Not ever have to deal with this. Now, not... Will everyone do that? No. It's going to depend on the condition of that intersection and how it's performing at that time.
I agree. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any more questions of the applicant? Mr. Ryan?
Yes, I have one. This one out parcel here, is that a residence or is that a commercial building? It's just below the storm?
We're talking about this one?
Yes, correct.
That's actually the post office.
That's the post office.
Yeah. They tend to lock up those leases for quite a long time. So unfortunately...
So what kind of buffer are you going to have around the post office?
One commiserate with the use, so that's a commercial use. We'll make that as probably a pretty minimum. I mean, a minimum buffer as possible. We don't see a compatibility issue with it. And our real focus is, let's get the buildings as far away from the existing Plymouth Landing subdivision. So that was our goal.
Real quick, interesting note about that. The property owner for the post office, they actually live in New York.
Okay. And you talk about enhanced buffers. Can you explain what you mean by enhanced buffers?
Well, I mean, obviously, we're talking about the... What we're committing to is going over and above and beyond what the code would otherwise require. Right now, we're at the map color change, but there's many steps to follow this one. And so our commitment is to enhance this buffer, not only, you know, through utilizing some of the existing trees that are... Would be within that buffer yard and also within that 30-foot right-of-way donation area, but also, you know, sprucing up the plantings. It's all part of the discussion. If that's important to you, Commissioner Ryan, that's something we could definitely take notes on and make sure when we come before you again on this project, if we come before you again on this project, that we'll be able to show you what we're talking about.
Do you plan to use any vinyl fencing around this property? I'm not a real fan of it because it deteriorates very quickly.
No, we're not using vinyl fence.
Okay.
We can commit to that.
I'm happy to hear that. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Yeah, the...
Mr. Dumey.
It's funny you brought up the enhanced buffering because I drove by the Publix out on Martin Road that we had specifically required enhanced buffering to check on you guys to make sure there was enhanced buffering, but it hasn't been built yet. So it's definitely important to me.
Yeah.
So, thank you. I look forward to hearing what the public has to say.
All right. Any more questions?
I have a question.
The...
The, 441, as you come toward Apopka, where that light is, I'm very familiar with that. I'm very familiar with Plymouth Sorento. I travel that. Does that already have a left turn lane that would go into that secondary entrance? Or are you gonna have to get with the state? Does that already have a left turn lane?
Plymouth Sorento is not.
What, Plymouth Sorento or Orange Avenue?
The secondary entrance right underneath 429, right there.
No, it does have a left turn lane.
Okay. Okay. Good.
Uh, I should have mentioned both Eric Halverson, uh, with the developer and, and, uh, Lou Clayson with APN Engineering, our, our project engineer in, in the audience.
All right. Any more questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Hules.
Sure.
All right. Say one from the public that wishes to speak on this matter. All right, ma'am. Please give us your name and address for the record.
All right. Kelly Butcher, 761 Plymouth Sorento Road. I'm the private residential house on that big, ritty, bitty corner right there. And, yeah, I did attend the January meeting by Zoom, voiced my concerns, voiced my opinion. First off, I want to say the 30-foot of right-of-way that they're donating, the 15-foot, they don't have any choice. They have to, because there's not 15-foot on the other side. If you come 15-foot over, you're in my living room. Okay? Um, the other thing is, is no road study, no traffic pattern study has been done from 441 to the 429. They're not gonna use that, that other exit over there by the light, because nobody wants to sit and wait at the light. They're gonna come out on the Plymouth Sorento exit, and it looks to me like there's two entrances, but they say there's only one. Now, they're gonna build 250 four-story buildings in front of my house, in front of Plymouth Landing as well, okay? I don't care what you say about the line of sight and how much you got on the setback, it's still gonna invade my privacy, okay? They're still gonna be able to see into my backyard. It does not, it is not compatible with that area. How is it compatible, four-story buildings, when you've got single-family residential? Which also brings me to the fact that 750 Plymouth Sorento Road is actually zoned as single-family, not industrial, not commercial, and not agricultural. It was also built in 1925, which is also probably part of the historical society, because it's one of the oldest buildings still in use in the city of Apopka. So it's probably, you know, a historical building, and that needs to be looked at. You also have to take into consideration that I have two special needs children, okay? The noise from the construction is gonna totally disrupt my house in major ways, okay? And I don't know if you know anything about autistic children and what happens when their routine or their schedule or noises get out of whack, okay? That's not something I'm prepared to deal with. I'm not prepared to have my house and my life flipped upside down. I'm the 30-year resident of Apopka. I have lived in that house for the last 13 years, okay? You can't give me safe ingress and escress. You for a fact know that Plymouth Sorento Road is a nightmare. I can't even get out of my driveway now. How am I supposed to get on my driveway if this comes? They, they, you know, they, they can't do it. There's all kind of other developments for Plymouth Sorento Road that are going in back-to-back, back-to-back. That's gonna increase traffic flow as well, not just for this project, but the other projects as well that are coming in. You know, I've complained multiple times regarding the traffic flow and everything, and everything like that. We've got all these other developments that are coming in. Where's the police, the fire, the medical, and the schooling for these? Oh, we'll just build more. Okay, well, where's the money gonna come from? Where's the land gonna come from? Okay? We were supposed to have an economic developer in January that controls all this. Where are they? Why haven't they been hired? Now, I'm looking to you guys right now to shut this down and stop the overgrowth and overdevelopment of Apopka, because you are slowly killing this town. We're on top of each other already. And I don't, one, do not want to see four-story buildings in front of my house. If they want to put a couple little houses there that, that fall in line with what's already there, that's their business. But that is a definite hard no. And there will be lawsuits if it happens.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone else here wish to speak? Your name and address for the record, please, sir.
David Stankowitz, 982 De Cleve Drive. I've been in my house 21 years, and I live exactly dead across from entrance to the 429. When they started building it, they never gave us any indication to do that. And when they started it, they did a survey of the, of the road, and when I moved in 21 years ago, there was about 5,000 to 6,000 people and cars going up and down that road. Since the 429 went in, now there's over 15,000 to 16,000 cars going up and down that road. And there's some times when I go to my entrance, I can't get out of my entrance, because people are coming out of the mail, out of the post office, and they're also backed up from 441 all the way to my entrance to my, to my house. You put this place in here with four stories of, of 250 people, you're talking 250 cars plus that's gonna come out and use Plymouth Sorento Road as their access to 441 and to 429. I'm totally, totally, totally against this project, because they're putting in a four-story building in a, in a residential area that's got nothing but houses. If they, and all, all the apartments that are going up on, on Binion Road, I mean, how many more apartments can you guys put? Okay. My God, there's, there's, there's gotta be 25 apartment buildings going up on Plymouth Sorento Road. Where are all these people coming from? Do we really need more apartments? I mean, this is getting to be ridiculous. You guys are giving away too many, too many projects with apartments. Get rid, I mean, we've gotta stop here someplace or other. You got car washes going in every place, we got dollar stores going in every place, and now we got apartments going in every place. It's gotta stop someplace sooner or later. And, and I feel sorry for the animals, because now in my backyard, I got raccoons, I got possum, I got cats, I got all kinds of animals coming through my yard, because they have no place to go. So you guys gotta stop letting all these people come in and build these damn apartments.
Excuse me, sir. Sir? Hello? Question. Where'd you say you live on the, can you point it out on this map?
982 De Cleve, right exactly across from, I'm at the, well, let's see. I can't move your screen. So I'm at, I'm at the top. I'm, well, my house is exactly dead even with the 429 access road.
Oh, the traffic-
Matter of fact, my, my house has got, four, four trucks have dumped over in front of my house, because they make the sharp turn, they make that turn too sharp.
Okay.
And had I not, at that time, had I not, at the time that they put that road in there, complained about it, they were gonna put a, a plastic wall up for us to protect us. And I said, no, 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 we need to put a, put the cement wall in. And then they finally put the barricade in, the, this, the bar, the metal barricade, and to protect us, because I've had, like I said, four trucks dumped over right in front of my house. And if one of those trucks go through that barricade, they're gonna be in my living room. So they have to put this big complex of stuff in, in here. I'm sorry, we have 100, 100 dump trucks go past my house every day, if not more. So I'm, I'm totally, totally against this. This is ridiculous. You guys gotta stop letting so many apartments in.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Michael Trudia, 809 De Cleve Drive. More of a comment on the traffic piece of this project. I don't think it's pictured on this map, but just north on the Connector Road to 429 in the mornings, there's already backups all the way to Plymouth Sorento Road when you're trying to turn left to get onto 429 South. So I appreciate the thought that's going into all the other access points. I know for sure we're gonna need to widen Plymouth Sorento at some point with the intersection of 441, but I just don't want the Plymouth Sorento and the 429 Connector Road piece to go unmentioned, because that is currently a backup, uh, current state.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public wish to speak on this? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Alma Elizabeth Mannion, and I live at 1102 De Cleve Drive, Plymouth Landing, Phase 1. I've been there since 1999. I was the second house built in there. We had initially talked about with our development to have a road cut through so that we could get out onto the little side road. I think it's called, um, what's it called?
Highland.
Yeah, Highland. And, um, they wouldn't do it. They wouldn't, you know, they decided that they weren't gonna do it. So we're stuck in there, and the only way we have to come in and go out is through that entrance that we have across from Plymouth Sorento, um, Plymouth Post Office. So the, the traffic is really horrendous, trying to get in and out of our development. We also have school buses that drop kids off out there. The roads are narrow. We, just one lane each way. And it, it's just not gonna be enough. Now, when we moved here, we thought it was grand, because we'd be living right across the street from the 429. And it wasn't, you know, it wasn't proposed at the very beginning, so we did find out later that it was gonna go there. But that was fine, because we thought that's gonna bring my housing development up. I think this is gonna bring it down because of the traffic, because of, just because of the location. The location is not right for that kind of homes. We have a lovely development, and they're spaced very nicely. They're not crowded on top of each other. They did a wonderful job in developing our development. And, um, I just would hate to see it where everybody's gonna wanna move. I'd hate to see that. And not everybody can afford to move. It's like having grandchildren or children that move away, and you can't go and follow them everywhere they move. It's the same thing with older people that hold these homes. I'm 81 years old. I've lived there since 1999. I worked for the city of Apopka. I love Apopka. I love Apopka. But, you know, I, and I realize that farming people are giving up their farms now, and so we're gonna have more and more places to build. It's gonna happen. And it'll happen on Plymouth Sorento Road, whether they go the other way towards Sorento or they come to our way, 429 or 4, both. 429 is up a little higher, too. There's another entrance down at the other end. Um, I don't know exactly where it comes out. But, you know, it's, it's a nightmare, the traffic there on that road. It's a very small road for the kind of traffic we're gonna have. And not only that, um, I don't, I lost my thought. That's my age. So, um, I just, I, I think it's a lovely complex, but I wish they would move it out where there's plenty more room, instead of right up here, right by our entrance, coming out and coming down to get onto 441. It's a nightmare in the morning now. People going to work down that road. Now, I think it was nice that they offered to give that side entrance, which they didn't tell us at the other meeting, that I attended the meeting with my other friends here from our neighborhoods. And it's, it's just a shame. The other question I have is about their drainage, that storm water runoff collection there. What is it called? Stormwater pond? Now, will that definitely be? What happens if it overflows? Where is it gonna go? That's my question.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Oh, um, excuse me. Can you back up? One reason why we like to have these meetings is to see where the conflicts are and how we can kind of mediate a solution. And you said, you threw out something about you wish they could do what? Something about pushing the property back? I'm not quite sure what you meant by that.
No, I meant down the road.
Can you explain that to me?
Down the road. Move it down the road.
Is that, what do you mean, down the road?
Pardon me?
A different location.
A different location?
Altogether?
Even Sorento Road, but even then, they'll, they'll have a problem with the traffic, too.
In other words, don't put anything there. It'll make you happy.
You know, he talks about the, comparing it to trying to have a, a commercial there and trying to scare us about it. Big commercial thing could go in there and have industrial stay over there. You know, it's not always like that, and you have control of that. And I don't know. I'm gonna leave it up to you people, but I'll tell you, it's a shame that we don't have more people here. It's a shame that people don't care anymore. They live here, they enjoy it, but they don't do anything. A lot of them work. A lot of them work, I don't, I'm retired, but there are a lot of people that work and they don't have time to even come to the meetings. But I appreciate being here tonight and expressing myself.
Thank you.
I assure you, we care, and we're glad you're here to tell, tell us your concerns. Alma, good to see you.
Mr. Hit, Mr. Hit, the, the stormwater pond, is that gonna be dry pond or wet pond?
I don't know at this stage, because the site plan hasn't been submitted.
It looks like a very big.
Name and address for the record.
Um, my name is Amy Mercato. I'm at 831 Leonor Lane. Um, I am in Plymouth Landing, although I am in Phase 2, but, um, I'm the working class that did show up. Uh, I personally am not a longtime resident. I moved here three years ago from Orlando, born and raised, and I love it here. And I know myself and my husband, we don't want apartments there. The traffic already, you wanna build apartments and you don't have the four-lane road built yet or even know when it's gonna be built, it's frustrating already with the traffic, and we just don't want any more traffic. So I'm just here to state my point. Um, and even with the extra, um, access or exit at Orange Avenue, I, it's just gonna be horrendous traffic, and I travel Plymouth Sorento Road pretty, uh, often. I love the new Publix, but I just don't think there's any room for apartments in the vicinity of Plymouth Landing, and I care where I live, and I don't want the extra traffic. So, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Name and address for the record, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Colin Simmons at 1246 De Cleve Drive. Um, so I'm a former prosecutor, so I'm not a real estate attorney like Mr. Hules is. So he probably will know more about real estate law than I do. But I do want to address some concerns that I have. When he specifically stated that at some point that road will have to be expanded, he doesn't know when, or if he does know when, I did not hear that, right? So what we're gonna have is we have to assume that at some point down the line, many years from now, potentially, after we all who live in that community have had to suffer through the unbearable traffic, that at some point somebody will decide that they need to fix the road issue. Meanwhile, the people who currently live in these homes will have to deal with that, hoping that at some point down the line, it will become addressed. Um, the other thing that I wanted to point out is the issue that was brought up, I believe it was Mr. Washington asked the question about the 30, uh, feet that was, that his clients are, as he describes it, giving to us all. There's the other area, there's the other area that is not being donated, because that's owned by somebody else. So the issue becomes then, as Mr. Washington specifically pointed out, what about that land? Because what we have is a situation where Mr. Hules then mentioned that it will have to be, uh, obtained by other means, or I forget his exact, exact phrasing. That's polite language. What it means is eminent domain. What it means is taking other people's property. That's what that means, and everybody here should understand that that's what that means in plain language. They will have to take other people's property in order to expand this from the 30 feet that his clients are donating and take somebody else's property or take property on this side. That will not fix the problem. That will not fix the problem, because that is not a benefit- not fix the problem. That will not fix the problem because that is not a benefit to us, that 30 feet. The tenants that are going to be living in this property need to get out of that property. That 30 feet is going to help them get out of the property. It's not going to alleviate the issues that everybody else is going to experience. Because we all know that the road goes beyond just this 30 feet. It goes all the way back here until it comes out onto 441. The problem is that right now, as they have this designed, their clients or their tenants will dump out onto this road, Plymouth Land, Plymouth Road, and it'll bottleneck right here. There is no additional road that's being donated at the bottom right here. So all of these people who are coming out through this exit will now dump onto this road and bottleneck right here. 30 feet is great. We're thankful for that 30 feet that they are donating, but that's not going to help us. The, I have my notes. Just let me jump back to my notes. One second. 250 units. There is this other exit that they're talking about. Now, I'm just eyeballing this. Human tendency is to go towards the closest exit when you're leaving an area. About 50% of these 250 units are close to this exit. That means 125 people living in these units. And I should clarify that. It's not 125 people. Because there's more than one person living in these apartments and some of these apartments. So it's going to be more than 125 people that are dumping onto this road, Plymouth Road, in order to get out. They're not going to say, let's be considerate of the people who live to these other subdivisions and let's go all to this exit on the other side. They're going to dump onto this road, which is going to back up the traffic. It's going to create a situation, I think somebody else mentioned that it's going to decrease the property values, and it will. Because who wants to wake up in the morning when the traffic is already backed up, but now you're going to be even more backed up by this new subdivision or this new apartment complex or whatever it's going to be. And you have to fight with traffic in order to get to work and to drop your kids off at school. It's not going to be a situation that's conducive to our property values. So for all those reasons, we're asking that this committee not go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishes to speak with us, ma'am? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Linda York and I live at 816 Leonor Lane. That's in Plymouth Landing, Phase Two. And I'm retired, luckily. So I can wait to get out on Plymouth Sorrento Road. Or I can wait when I turn onto Highland, which maybe shouldn't, but sometimes I do. But the traffic backs up unbelievable, past the post office sometimes. And I feel sorry for the people in Plymouth Landing, Phase One, because they can't get out of there. The other thing that's happening is that we, where are the kids going to go to school? As it is now, there's, the schools that we have now are full. And we even have a bus coming into Plymouth Landing, Phase Two, to pick up one of the special needs kids. So what's going to happen when there's other special needs kids? What's going to happen to the animals? As it is now, like somebody was saying, we have raccoons, coyotes, bears coming into our property. And I've been down Binion. I think it's deplorable what is being built there. To look, try to look out at, I know this has nothing to do with this, but to try to look out at Lake Apopka and see rooftops. You can't see the lake. We're building way too much. So I plead with you to really start looking at, maybe holding back on some of this. But around where we live, we can't afford to have more traffic there. They tore up Highland with the big trucks coming through. The shoulder was torn up. Somebody finally repaired it. But, and this is what's happening. The roads are starting to break down. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else who wants to speak?
Albert McKemme, 3603 Golden Gem Road, Apopka. Commissioner Becker said at the last city hall meeting that the die was cast a number of years ago, when we in fact decided to build the 429. The fact of the matter is that it doesn't matter where we build developments in Apopka now. The problem that you guys face is there's no five-year plan. There's no infrastructure for the roads that have been built in 2008. And we now have approximately 6,000 homes going into that area. 3,000 at the end of Golden Gem Road, 2,000 on Kelly Park. You guys have got to realize that if you've got 6,000 homes, we may have 10,000 children to school. So irrespective of whether you grant this gentleman development or not today, the responsibility is on you as our commission to get into step with development. We need a five-year plan. We need road infrastructure. And we need schools. And until we can decide on that, we really have to be careful what we're doing. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, bring you back to the board for discussion.
Make sure your mics are on.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll try to, my comments brief. I did want to bring up our civil engineer, Luke Eubien, just to talk about, although this is conceptual and design, you bait, what he believes is going to be the stormwater design, because there was a question about that, whether it would be a wet pond or a dry pond and the standards by which that would be constructed. And then I think Luke has a little bit of information on, on the, this is a, by the way, Plymouth Sorrento Road is a county road today. So there's coordination involved with the county in sort of any sort of improvement in the future. And whether it's the county that's ultimately going to lead that effort, or there's some type of arrangement where the road is, is taken over by the city and the city takes charge of the improvements, remains to be seen. But Luke's going to report on, on the, the county's plans with respect to the widening. And then I have a couple more comments right after.
Luke Klassen, Appian Engineering, 221 Lee Road. So a couple of comments. First with the stormwater. So it will, right now, based on the geological information, geotech borings, it'll be a dry pond. Right now, the site currently slopes from the south to the north. And so we put the stormwater pond in the low part of the site, as you typically do. The overflow would be to the north. It doesn't actually flow to the east across Plymouth Sorrento. Plymouth Sorrento is raised up. And so it would not flow to the east, to the neighborhood. It's going to be designed to hold the entire pond. It does look like a large pond because we are in the Archive of Recharge Basin. So it has additional requirements for both treatment and attenuation. And so we, we're not allowed to, based on current codes, you can't discharge at a greater velocity or a greater amount of volume of water. You can't discharge post-development more than it does pre-development. So we're required to retain the water and then discharge at a lower rate and a lower volume. And so that's how the pond will be designed. So it wouldn't be additional stormwater. As far as the roadway goes, so currently, Orange County is, they don't have a plant, it's not, the road's not in their five-year plan for improvements. And so they're just asking for donations. So we provided a 30-foot roadway donation or dedication. This is the first step they take. As Jonathan indicated, as far as you and Mr. Commissioner Washington, you requested the USPS, if it ever got developed again, or the gas station ever got developed, they would also dedicate right away. As far as what they would dedicate, I'm not sure. But Orange County is not, they're not, they don't have it in their five-year plan for roadway improvements. They're just now looking at, understanding they have a roadway issue, a failing intersection. They've done a study with DOT in Orange County, and they've realized the intersection was having issues. And so they are asking for dedication for right away. And so that's what we are providing, a 30-foot right.
Just hold on for a second. Did you say, what did you say about the gas station?
If they ever develop in the future, they would be required to be, to dedicate right away. It doesn't have to come through eminent domain. If anything were, anything happened.
In the future, it would.
Orange County would require them.
It would be widened at that point, at the gas station, you're saying?
I didn't hear your question. I'm sorry.
The road would be widened at the gas station.
If, if they develop in the future, they'd be required to dedicate additional right away.
Please keep in mind, there's also property on the eastern side, closer to that side that has not been developed yet.
Or if the county put it on their capital improvement plan to do this project, then there's funds allocated for the acquisition of that property through the other means, i.e. eminent domain, which is not an unheard of process when it comes to road widening. The preferred method is a donation or some arms-length transaction. That doesn't always work out.
The last thing that I wanted to mention was that there were some concerns over how much traffic will be pushed. And there's a secondary access off 441. Our current traffic projections, the traffic report's being done right now. That's not typically submitted with the Future Land Use Amendment. It usually comes with the rezoning or the MDP level. But the current traffic report is projecting roughly a 50-50 split with traffic leaving the site onto 441 because it looks to be a faster route to leave at a signalized intersection. I mean, everyone knows if you go to a signalized intersection, you get specific timing where you're allowed to turn versus going to Plymouth Sorrento, you don't have a signal providing you those breaks, those gaps to be able to turn left or right. And so we're currently projecting at about a 50-50 split for traffic exiting, entering and exiting the development.
So real quick, just some ending comments. You know, what we heard is similar to what we heard at the community meeting, right? There, there is a concern with the existing condition of the roads today and any additional traffic put on it. And when I'm set up here and compared to you with what it's entitled for today and they can go to a site plan and build versus the process we need to go through and the commitments we're making as part of that process, what we're, it's not being done as a threat. It's just, it's the comparison. It's the apples to apples. And although this property is not developed today, I will tell you, with the development that's coming in the vicinity of it, it's going to look more attractive for commercial than it might have in the past because of all the new rooftops that are coming in. And it makes, that's what you need in order to make retail commercial actually work. We think this is a better project. We don't think donating the 30 feet right away is a silver bullet. We think it's a step in the right direction and it only makes those next steps that have to happen easier to accomplish. But we do think that that access that we, we're, we're committing to provide off of Orange Blossom Trail and Orange Avenue is a game changer. And it wasn't presented at the community meeting because we hadn't had enough dialogue and discussions with CFX and FDOT at that time in January to feel comfortable enough to represent something that we didn't know whether we felt good about being able to deliver. Since that time, or four months later, three months later, we feel confident enough that we're saying it on the record. We think we can deliver that. And we think that really is going to be a benefit to this community. Whether they agree with that or not, that's fine. But I don't think the comparison should be this, this property in its existing state versus the, the, the project we're proposing. I think that's the wrong analysis because it's already entitled. It's a site plan away from being something. We think what we're proposing is, is better for the community at large. And it addresses a housing need. There's a housing shortage in this region, in the city, that, that, you know, and, and we think this developer and the quality of product that he builds would be a real benefit to some of the other uses that could be potentially achieved here. So happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, so when you give up the 30 feet, how's that going to affect your enhanced buffering?
Well, Commissioner Ryan, the plan would be to keep it as much in its current, if there's trees within it, we'd try to incorporate those trees and leave them and not touch them for the short term. And whether that's three, four, five more years than that, before they actually come in and do the road widening, it would stay in that green space. Eventually, it would be, become roadway. And then, you know, there's still going to be 100, over 100 feet between that roadway and these buildings. And that's where the enhanced buffering would occur.
It won't be 100 feet of buffering, no.
It would be a mix. There'd be, there would be certainly, there are, you know, a parking field there. There are these garage buildings that we, we showed you previously and I can bring up on a map again. But there will be considerable distance. And the distance between this, this building and the Plymouth Landing doesn't change. It's going to be over 240 feet.
I just think it's, a four-story building is too close to single-family houses. You're just, you're too close. I just don't think we should go from four, I don't think we should go from four stories to single-family houses. It's just, it's not a good mix. If your, if your building was further back, I, I, I might, I might consider, but I think it's just too close for a four-story building. We've had this problem before on Dixie Highway. We had that, we've got this problem with a story building on Lester Road that Orange County approved. That's right next to a, a single, single-family homes. It's, it's too big of a building next to a single-family home, in my opinion.
Yes, Commissioner. And so right now, we're at the conceptual phase, right? This is just, this allows us to move on to the next steps. And if, if it turns out that it's the pledge, that it's the decision this board that they can't support a four-story because of that compatibility concern, there is the option for a three-story. However, it doesn't result in the clustering that this, this site plan allows. It, there's more buildings involved. It's more spread out. You have less green space because you can't consolidate. But that's something we'd be willing to look at, in, in, in an alternative that I think is feasible. It's not, in our, in the developer's opinion, the best option, I think, for us. But that's something that could be looked at, Commissioner Ryan. And so we're not at the site plan now. We, we're just asking for an opportunity to move to the next step, to be able to hopefully bring that site plan before you and have those conversations.
All right. So basically, you, you, your, the bottom line is you need X number of units in order to make it a profitable proposition. Is that correct?
That.
So, so the bottom line is this. So, you know, you have a smaller footprint, you go high. Small footprint. You know, less fertilization, wider footprint. That's the bottom line, isn't it? So, yeah. And I understand, I appreciate what you're saying about if it's four, a four-story building and you push it back away from Plymouth Sorrento Road closer to 429, that's a good thing in your head. I understand where you're coming from. But now, our people, our neighbors, our residents, 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 including myself, I go up and down Plymouth Sorrento Road every day. I'm telling you. I'm not going to repeat it. But you, you put a lot of time and energy in developing this preliminary plan. I'm going to just throw it out. You know, it might sound undoable. I'm going to just do it anyway. All right. Why couldn't you just forget about Plymouth Sorrento Road and shift the, you know, make it one major road alongside, between 429 and the residences? Just have one major road that'll dump out onto 441. Our people on Plymouth Sorrento Road, including me, because I want to get jacked up on that road, won't have to worry about that. I'm just throwing it out.
And, and, great question. It's something we explored with CFX. CFX controls that area that's shown in the aerial map here. We wanted to, to actually have an easement or have it run farther along this boundary to be able to candidly make a better access. This works. It's not the perfect access, but it works. And CFX had no interest whatsoever to giving us any more than what is shown on this site plan.
Code actually requires two major entrances into this.
And we would need a second, I presume, to code on Plymouth Sorrento, no matter what, for, for this use.
All right. I threw it out. It doesn't work. Next.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Bring back the board for discussion or motion.
Yeah, I got a couple of points I'd like to make, Mr. Chairman. First of all, to the people that came here to speak tonight, you know, this shows the process is working because we've had a, I mean, we even had a blow up last month where we didn't have any public comment. So this is great. We're glad you're here to listen, or we're here to listen to you all's comments on it. You know, I'm definitely concerned about the, the traffic going up and down Plymouth Sorrento. And if you're telling me that this is going to result in eminent domain required for them homeowners to give up their backyards to, to expand the road. And, I mean, I just want to make sure because that's a hard stop for me right there.
That would be speculation at the very best.
That is speculation. Because you guys were talking about.
I never, I never, if I, if that's what came across, that's not what I was suggesting.
No, I'm just asking.
Yeah. No, I, I, I think, and, and truthfully speaking, the right-of-way for any sort of expansion is going to come from the west side. Because they don't, they don't typically, when they look at this, take from single-family residential when they.
They won't take a row of homes on the eastern side.
No, it's coming from the west side. That's not a concern. I, If there was some allusion to that, that didn't come from me. What we were suggesting is we're moving the needle by getting that, at least, when the county or the city comes through to make this road widening, they have this property secured, they don't have to deal with an owner that they otherwise may have to if this, you know, if it's not developed as we're suggesting or some other manner.
No, the final point I wanted to make is just to remind her that, you know, we're a recommending body. We don't have the final say on the way development goes in the city, but we certainly are taking people's considerations into, thoughts and concerns into our considerations. I'm just concerned about the traffic. I don't know how we get to the right solution on that, given that we were just told there's no five-year plan to improve Plymouth Sorento. I know I drove out there a couple of months ago on a Saturday and I was somewhat surprised because I went down the 429, I took a right and I took a right on the Plymouth Sorento and I was somewhat surprised at the number of cars going up and down that road at 3 o'clock on a Saturday. And I know Mr. Howard lives right down there and I just don't know how we get to the right situation to get that road fixed. That's my comment.
I would make one comment, and then this is the same thing that's come up in front of us.
Is your mic on?
We've had the issue with the school capacity that, you know, we wait for the school capacity, we'll never build anything. And now we're getting to the point where the roadways is the same problem. And it's not isolated to Apopka. It's, you know, everywhere you go up the 429 and look at all the development, all the way literally to Kissimmee. And the infrastructure and roads around these developments are far, to me, are insufficient. And that's an ongoing problem. How is that addressed? And I would even ask you that, Jim. Who is the leverage in the city of Apopka to twist Orange County's arm? Or does that have to be something from the people? Because I know us as a board, we don't have the ability to communicate with Orange County. You know, the city council could pass an ordinance that, you know, we're not gonna develop anything unless the road is X amount of capacity, excess capacity, or the ability to do that capacity. And I know that's addressed in the comp plan, but it's like a self-defeating thing here. So, we're at the mercy of Orange County to develop a road where if, you know, that road, if part of this plan, and again, I don't want to speak for these people here, but part of the plan was we're gonna four-lane that road and have a turn lane and stoplight and this, that and the other, that would probably cut their objections down drastically. And because nobody wants something developed across street when there are woods, I get that too. But, so, my question would be to you as staff, where's our leverage? How do we address that? How do we put pressure on them or does that, the city council have to be the one to do that?
It is, it is a combination with, especially with this corner, we're dealing with the city of Apopka, of course, Orange County and FDOT. FDOT holds a lot of the cards and when they see that a corner is failing, that's where we have to work with those two agencies in order to get the corrections done. The other thing that occurs is that with these developments, and it's like you mentioned, similar with the school board and obviously, we can't build schools until we get a certain amount overcapacity and that's because of the legislation. We can't fix roads without transportation impact fees. We are gonna be getting transportation impact fees from this and also the development over on the northwest corner of this, of this section with the Floridian Town Center. It's gonna be millions that we'll be able to put towards some of the road improvements that we can work with Orange County for, for the corrections of some of these road conditions. The other thing that's gonna end up coming into play is we do have a county that, just north of here, approved over 600 units and it's gonna be an affordable town, affordable apartment project. And Orange County does not collect transportation fees for that type of a product. So, all of a sudden, those fees that would have gone towards fixing roads, we'd like to think that the money would remain here in Apopka, is not gonna go to any road improvements, other than possibly turn lanes going into those, into that. So, Orange County has, they're passing the buck in regards to that type of a product and the effects that it's, that are not, are not gonna be mitigated. We're hoping that, and we've already had a couple of different meetings with our friends at Orange County in regards to that. And we're hoping that the, some of the tax money that the, that Orange County is collecting from all of the different improvements that, or different developments that we've got up here in Apopka, that they will take their, the general fund, some of those funds and put those towards some of the roadways that, that they're getting benefits from also. It's, it's not, it's, there's not a clear solution, that's the big thing.
And again, it's not, and even broader than this particular issue, but again, the developer, it's, you know, it's not incumbent upon them to be responsible for the roads leading to it.
Correct.
The same way with the school issue. And that, my concern there, and granted, the homeowner's there, I get it. But, so, everybody's between a rock and a hard place here. And what I'm coming up with, if you put aside the, I don't like that they're four stories or they're too close to my house, everything seems to be coming back to road infrastructure capacity.
Every time.
And what have we, or what can we do? Is there anything we can do as a board to push forward for that? And I don't believe there is, as far as the charter goes, that has to be something the city council does or the community development has to do that. But Orange County hasn't done a study on our side of the, our side of the county since 2008. 2008, the difference between 2008 and '09 is astronomical. So, it's frustrating to me to hear all this, and I don't need to go on a rant, but the homeowners have a valid point, the developer has a valid point. And it's not either one of their responsibilities to do the road, that's Orange County. So, you know, are we just gonna say we're not developing anything because Orange County won't give us roads? That's unacceptable, so.
And right now is-
I guess I just wanted to go on a rant anyways.
Yeah. And right now, Plymouth Sorento Road, according to county, is not ready to get widened. So, what we're doing on the projects that we've got is getting the road dedications that we can out of any, anybody, whether it's this one and, of course, up close to the Kelly Park, we've got quite a few projects there that we're getting all the roadway that's needed, that will be needed for any widening projects.
I don't like that we're held hostage by Orange County deciding the road needs to be widened or not and a landowner or the residents are held hostage by the same thing.
Correct.
We don't have any way to put any leverage on them, other than take over the roads ourselves.
And then, and then you need millions and millions of dollars in order to do the correct improvements. And that's why, that's why it's gotta be a team effort because there's not one entity, other than possibly FDOT, that has, you know, pockets big enough to fix an intersection like this. But it's gonna take a major influx of thought to fix this intersection, just with Highland even coming out to it is, it's complicating in itself.
I understand.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a question. Jim, relative to this discussion and this application in Plymouth Sorento Road in general, from 441 even up to Lake County, I understand, I asked you to correct me. You mentioned that Orange County does not provide any impact fees for affordable housing projects. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, correct me if I'm wrong, is there not a proposed affordable housing project that's gonna be constructed just north of the Connector Road?
That's what I just said, that's what I just covered.
Is that the one you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay.
On the eastern side.
And how big will that be?
I believe a little over 600 units.
600.
And the grant money that they receive for that never funnels down to us for our infrastructure, or unfortunately. Anyway, off to another subject. Anyone else have any comments or questions?
That was a good rant, Mr. Chairman. But, so, I just kinda, I wanna, sorry, go ahead. I was just gonna, I'm just thinking, thinking, you know, I mean, because we did have the comparison between the apartment complex and the commercial. So, let's just say Publix, right? That's a commercial usage, it seemed like that would meet your requirements. Would the residents be happier to have a, you know, have that used as a commercial basis? Would that resolve the concerns, you know?
I believe it's zoned for that now.
It's zoned for that right now and this is, this is, the applicant is asking for this.
Yeah, right, right.
I can't speculate. I can't hypothetically-
Right, right.
-predict what they would or would not like and it's-
I'm just trying to, I just want to get to what would make everybody happy.
It won't, there's not, there's not one, there's not one solution that'll make everybody happy.
Try to keep everybody equally unhappy, right?
All right, without further ado, we'll bring it back here for a motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, something will have to happen with that property sooner or later. We know it's like the sun's gonna come up in the morning and it's gonna go down at night, so something will be happening. But for this particular issue, I recommend rejection of the amendment to Policy 3.1H dot, dot II of the Future Land Use Amendment and MAP 1-1A, Apopka Comprehensive Plan, and recommend transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Development.
And do not recommend transmittal.
I always recommend rejection of the amendment.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Washington, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Stanley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
What was the? Roll call? Need to do a roll call.
Motion carries is, yeah, you gonna do a roll call? Mr. Hitt requested a roll call, Ms. Chairman?
It's six to one.
Six to one.
Okay.
So.
You know what, the problem would have been, I gave the motion to reject. Maybe I inadvertently said nay, I meant to say yea. I agree with the rejection.
Okay, let's revote just to simplify this. Let's be clear and concise. All in favor of the denial, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed of the denial?
Aye.
There we go.
Thank you.
Six to one, clear as we can be. All right. Motion is denied, or the motion is passed.
This goes, does go to city council.
All right. Number four, comprehensive plan, small-scale future land use amendment, 750 and 922 Plymouth Sorento Road. Owners Peggy T. Carlton Living Trust, Gary D. Carlton Living Trust and Gary D. Carl Living Trust. Location, or applicant's is Lounes Law Firm, Jonathan Hules. Location, 750 and 922 Plymouth Sorento Road. This is Sanchez.
Jean Sanchez of the Planning and Zoning Division. This is the companion application of the previous item. This is the request, recommend approval of the future land use map amendment from agriculture and commercial to HDR 25. So, I'll just get right down to it. I think you already have the background information of the existing uses in the adjacent areas. As mentioned, the applicant intends to construct a multifamily development with the proposed density of 19 dwelling units per acre. And as in the previous item, one member of the Development Review Committee, the Police Department, believes that the proposed is not consistent with the surrounding area. The rest of DRC members did not object to the applicant's request and the recommended motion is to find the proposed change in future land use from commercial and agricultural to HDR 25 compatible with the surrounding areas and recommend approval. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff? All right, applicant have a presentation? All right. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Albert McKinney, 3603 Golden Gem Road, Apopka. I might as well flip a coin and ask you to tell me whether it's heads or tails, gentlemen. Because that's how you play with the residents of this city. You continuously offer some developers development and other developments are denied development. And as you gentlemen recognize tonight, a lot of it comes down to the roads. And we can never decide when there's gonna be development. And there's always turmoil with the roads because some roads are owned by Orange County and some are owned by City of Apopka. Gentlemen, you have a responsibility to take accountability of what's happening in this city. I can tell you one instance recently that the city of Apopka has been asked to adopt Golden Gem Road. I know we're speaking about Plymouth Sorento, but I'm just giving you an analogy. Mr. Hitt here recently has proposed numerous developments on Golden Gem Road. They've all been passed bespoke tonight. There's 6,000 houses being put on a road that's not fit to carry 20 road, 20 cars. So, why is there this disparity between one developer and another developer? Surely, the question here tonight is, you need to get things sorted out. We need to resolve who's gonna take responsibility for a road before the development ever goes forward to you to be proposed. This is a waste of your time, it's a waste of my time. City Roads Department recently have asked for a change in impact fees. They've now asked that impact fees will go up considerably. The reason they're given is because previously, road development would have cost 1.2 million per mile. They're now recognizing it'll cost 4 millions per mile. The problem is, again, I can only use an example that I'm familiar with, Golden Gem Road. Golden Gem Road is two miles long. They've already passed 6,000 houses on there. It's gonna be used, it belongs to Orange County. You guys, when you vote for more, for more properties anywhere, have got to first take into consideration, who's gonna fund it? Because Orange County have offered, the city of Apopka, 2.3 million to adopt Golden Gem Road, a road that's gonna take 12 million to fix. The problem isn't who is gonna develop what property, the problem is, the infrastructure's not here. There's no synchronicity within the developments that are occurring in Apopka. And personally, you know, I've no axe to grind, whether it's three-story, four-story or where it is. The developer came up with something that was a quality build. But it doesn't matter on the quality if you don't have the infrastructure there to provide things for them in the first place. These people are being prejudiced because you guys don't have an answer.
Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else wish to speak?
Kelly Butcher, 761 Plymouth Sorento Road. Again, with the 600 units, I want to make it known right here and now, I was never notified, I was never given an option to say yea, nay, or voice my opinion on that. It just kinda snuck in in the middle of the night and bam, it was there. So, I was never given an opportunity to use my voice. Had I been given an opportunity, I'd be standing there saying no. Also want to remind you that 750 is actually zoned, single family. Again, I'm gonna say it, 750 Plymouth Sorento is zoned, single family. There is a house there, a family lives there, okay? That is not commercial, that is not agricultural, that is not, it is single family, which means a house, a historic, possible historical house would have to be tore down in order to build this, okay? It's gonna be an eyesore. You're gonna have luxury apartments, which are gonna increase crime and other things like that in our neighborhood as well, okay? It's gonna make my house look like a little, I don't know if I can say this, a little poop box, I'll just say poop box, okay? My house is old, it's been there a while. It's really gonna depreciate the value of my home and my property, okay? Gonna take it back to the roads again. Takes me 20 minutes to get out of my house at 6:30 in the morning. What the heck are y'all doing up at 6:30 in the morning? That you can't, I can't even get out of my driveway at 6:30 in the morning, okay? 6:30 in the morning and I gotta wait 20 minutes to get out of my driveway. No. Do you know how many accidents happen in front of my road? I got so many accidents in front of my road that I just start passing out blue forms and say, you can fill them out here, I'll witness them? Or you can wait for FHP, it's gonna take 12 hours, I don't provide snacks or water. It's bad. It's bad. So, again, I'm gonna ask you, I'm looking to each and every one of you right now to deny this land change as well because that's where it starts. They change the density, they change the usage, and bam, they just start going and doing whatever they want to do. I'm not okay with it. Not okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing that, bring it back to the board for discussion or motion. We need a motion to deny or to accept?
Mr. Chairman, with this previous vote to the negative, does that make this amendment irrelevant? Because are you trying to change a future land designation on something that was not voted for prior?
No, it's, it's two separate motions. So one can pass and the other to be denied, and then it goes in front of the city council and they make the final decision on that. So this is a separate issue.
Well, I don't mind making, if there's no more discussion, I don't mind making a motion. But I'm gonna make it to deny, because I'm gonna make a motion. I move to find the proposed change in future land use designation from commercial and agriculture to HDR 25, incompatible with the character of the surrounding areas, and I recommend denial of the future land use amendment, subject to the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment to MAP 1 dash 1 dot A and Policy 3 dot 1 dot H dot 2, as opposed, as well as the findings and facts presented in the staff reports and exhibits.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Dumey, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. All right. All right, moving on to site plans. Major development plan, Mid-Florida South Logistics Parks. Owner, BPG Mid-Florida South One LLC and Central Florida Expressway Authority. Applicants, Dave Schmidt Engineering, care of Dave Schmidt. Location, southwest corner of Peterson Road and State Road 429. Sanchez.
Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the Mid-Florida South Logistics Park Major Development Plan. The subject properties are located on the southwest corner of Peterson Road and State Road 429, approximately 71.28 acres in size.
Jean, hang on a second.
Sure.
Mary, can I ask you to close that door, please? Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
The site is also located south of the previously approved Mid-Florida Logistics Park, east of 429. The major development plan proposes the development of an industrial center with two buildings for warehouse, distribution, and other light industrial uses with trailer parking and approximately 71 acres. Building one on the northern portion of the project site will have approximately 352,000 square feet of area, while building two will have 338,000 square feet in area. The applicant is proposing a total of 690,939 square feet of industrial use. While 364 parking spaces are required, the applicant is proposing a total of 727 parking spaces with 11 accessible spaces. The maximum permitted height is 45 feet. Additionally, the site is heavily wooded, therefore, a tree mitigation calculation will be assessed at the construction site plan review, and payment to the tree bank will be required. The landscape plan proposes the planting of live oaks, elms, red maple, southern magnolias, bald cypress, sweet gums, and red cedar trees within landscape parking islands in the perimeter of the project area. Understory and ornamental trees are also proposed to be planted throughout the site. The proposed building architecture meet the intent of the Development Design Guidelines for Industrial Developments. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Mid-Florida South Logistics Park Major Development Plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff?
No.
All right, applicant here, do they have a presentation?
Eric Weinco with Blue Scope Properties Group, 1540 Genesee Street, Kansas City, Missouri. We don't have a presentation, but we do have our team here for any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you, sir. Anyone have questions, the applicant?
I have a question.
Commissioner Washington.
Sir. Kansas City?
Yes, sir.
Is the, if the, are the ribs that good out there?
I can attest.
Yeah, and the traffic report, and the conclusions. I couldn't read through that whole report, because it drive me crazy. But I did read the conclusions. Just curious, you have LOS, that's probably Level of Service, then you have F. Does that mean failure? What does F mean?
I'm not sure what that means. When I talked with our traffic engineer specifically about the reports, the-
I can't hear you. Can you speak?
Sorry. When I talked with the traffic engineer about the reports, I specifically asked about what the conclusion was, which was that no additional capacity would be required for the addition. So the existing roads are already wide enough and large enough. And in fact, we actually added, on the original Phase 1 to our project, we added capacity via turn lanes. So I'm not sure that I know the answer to your question, though.
Well, it's just, I just highlighted part of your subverbage in your conclusion. And it kind of ties into this long conversation we just had about this previous application and traffic on Plymouth-Sorrento Road. And here, your traffic study brings in Plymouth-Sorrento Road into this mix as well. And that's where I see this LOSF related to Plymouth-Sorrento Road. And I was just wondering if you could build on what I'm seeing here, reading. If you don't know, you don't know.
Jim, is that our traffic study, or is that the applicant's traffic?
It's the applicant's traffic study came in with that. The only reason Plymouth-Sorrento is in there is because it's in the area. But the flow of traffic doesn't really affect Plymouth-Sorrento. It goes out onto Orange Avenue, General Electric, Shelby Industrial, and, and Hermit Smith Road to get out to 441 or to get out to the 429.
Okay, thank you.
In addition, the, our transportation coordinator is also working with them to do connections on Peterson Road going over to the east, get over to King's, King Street, and basically getting multiple, multiple branch access points coming into this project. This is kind of a filled project on the southern side of where Coca-Cola is at the end of Shelby Industrial Drive. So it's, it's really the only thing that could go there. And there are no residential structures there. And it was also a very good way that we, that all the parties were able to work with CFX in order to shift some of the drainage ponds on the property itself. There's a drainage pond that CFX had in the center portion of the, of the project. Yeah, right, yeah, right about there. And what we were able to do is get CFX to basically vacate that, that portion so we could get the building there. We shifted the pond to the south. And then as part of their drainage and part of our, the buffer going into our birding park to the south, we actually have a huge buffer, thank you, made up of wet ponds, dry ponds, and then of course, the CFX pond before it even gets to our birding park on the south side, which is, connects to Luster that goes over to the, the Apopka Wildlife Drive. So this was a big bonus in regards to being able to get that, that, a little bit more of a buffer for our birding park so we don't have, you know, buildings right next to, right next to the park.
I got a question, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Dumey.
First of all, to the applicant, I wish you hadn't said you're from Kansas City, because I'd love to go to Gates. But the second point, and I believe Steph may have to answer this one. The tree bank, can you talk some link to that? Because there's a lot of mature trees on this property, it looks like they're all gonna be removed.
Yeah, whenever we do the tree bank, obviously, there's a certain percentage that has to be retained on-site. But whenever you have a, a site that's, that has a lot of trees, anything over six inches has to be documented, they do have to actually pay into the tree bank. So wherever monies go into that tree bank that aren't replanted on the site basically goes to the rest of the city, and we can utilize the funds for planting trees somewhere throughout the city. There's not, there's not a whole lot of places they can replant the, the trees here. But, but we do look at buffer areas and, and areas around the park that they can replant.
Great, I know it's part of the land development code, but I sure wish we could protect some more mature trees, so.
If there, if there were a building is, it's kind of hard to protect a tree. But we protect them wherever we can. That's part of our reviews when we go through site plans.
Well, and I would add too, that as part of our development, we are dedicating these approximate 10 acres back to the City of Apopka. So those trees will be preserved as well.
Thank you, sir. All right, any questions, any more questions? I got one. So you have a wet pond and a dry pond. So the wet pond has a liner in it?
We say this drainage, traffic stuff, I mean. Dave Schmidt, Dave Schmidt Engineering, 12301 Lincoln Hill Road, Orlando, Florida, 32828. Yeah, no, no liner in the dry pond. We have, like you said, a dry pond and wet pond. We also have the CFX dry pond that we're doing the land swap with. So it'll actually be two dry ponds there and then the wet pond to meet the phosphorus loading requirements that's required by the district.
But the wet pond has a liner in it?
No.
How do you keep it wet then?
That one's closer to the, well, that one dry pond's close to well, and but it's controlled higher. So you have a separation between the season, the bottom of the pond and the seasonal high water table. And then your wet pond is controlled lower at, at the natural seasonal high water. So it's kind of, it's kind of like this, if you will, where the dry ponds appear and the wet-
I see now, I see where you have two ponds. Are you planning on using the wet pond for irrigation?
Uh, no.
I don't know, okay.
No. It'd be very similar to the, kind of the Phase 1 project to the north. As reference where the Coca-Cola and the Goy and all that is, very similar system, just to the northwest. You have the, kind of the same system where you have a dry pond that goes to the wet pond and then to the lake.
And you donated the wetlands to the City of Apopka?
Yes.
Where, is there, is there access to it? Because wetlands have to be maintained.
Just the, the buffer. And yeah, there's not really any maintenance that needs to be done to the, the wetland. I don't, I don't know if biotech was, environmental consultants putting that in the conservation area, but that's a part of the water management district permit, to see if they're gonna put it in a conservation.
But the city does have access to the-
We've got access to it to the south, from the birding, from the birding park, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any more questions, applicant?
Any more drainage?
No.
Thank you, sir. All right, bring it back to the board for discussion and motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to recommend approval of the Mid-Florida South Logistics Park Major Development Plan, subject to the findings in the staff report.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Stanley, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Norwood. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Platte Wolf Lake Ranch, owners Roseville Farms LLC, care of David Robb. Applicants Appian Engineering, care of Jimmy Palm. Location, northeast corner of Poncan Road and Poncan Pines Road. Ms. Sanchez.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the Wolf Lake Ranch Platte. Subject property is located on the northeast corner of Poncan Road and Poncan Pines Road, approximately 31.49 acres in size. The applicant has submitted the Platte for consideration, creating 61 residential lots in a private subdivision. This Platte also creates Track J, a 30-foot-wide right-of-way dedication to the perpetual use of the public, as well as Track M and N for open space and amenity. Access to the development is proposed at Poncan Pines Road, and emergency access is provided adjacent to Poncan Road at the existing curb cut. The Platte is consistent with the major development plan for Wolf Lake Ranch, formerly known as Poncan Pines Subdivision, approved by city council on December 7, 2022. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Platte, subject to the reviews of the city engineer, city surveyor. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff? Okay. Applicant here, do they have a presentation? Oh, we see it. It's, you're good, you're good. It's a Platte, not that hard. Okay. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Unless they're under a chair, no. All right. Bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve, approval of the Wolf Lake Ranch Platte, subject to the reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Norwood, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Ryan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, do we have any old business? Any new business?
Just real quick, just before the meeting, I hand out, it's getting kind of a lot of, it has got a lot of press yet, but it will. Downtown is always, we're always trying to get art downtown. There's always a question where, how, what, who, who's gonna take care of it? I got a guy, his name is Zogger Cameroz, he's actually one of the barbers over at the downtown barber shop here. And he's been able to talk to a few different artists, and also some of the property owners in downtown, not just these. This is what we're using to start the process, though, is to possibly create a downtown artist within the next four, the four blocks between where their, this current block is, it's shown on it, and then also the blocks over to the west, where we're looking for the station street project. So he's got the permissions from, from Matt Hutchinson, who owns the Roddy Studio, where the con shop used to be. By the way, if you haven't walked, walked over there, gone in there, take a look. He's done some vast improvements to the building inside. He's also purchased alleyway passing on the backside of this, this place. Invested good on the, on that. And then, so that's one location. And the first, the second page shows, not the city, but it's going to be Apopka. This is an example of what they, what they were able to do down in the city, and basically extend the same ours to the Apopka. And we haven't seen the concept art for that, but it'll be something very similar, nature-oriented from the eye. And that would go on the wall that faces Park Avenue, right across the street. The CAF, which is also known as City Hall, City Hall, where the enginey branch is. And then the other location is on McCloud, 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 the Attorney's Department Hall. This is where the alley goes from the parking lot to Main Street. These are on the three, the three units that are, the three panels that are facing the central parking lot. And that, this is kind of a creative one, one of the things that they like to do sometimes, is get people to interact with the art. And the Angel Williams are, I'm gonna say Angels, because they kind of look like that to me. You can actually go there and pose in front, and if you are an Angel once, you will be able to, you know.
It seems like a pretty remote location. I mean, that's not like a high-traffic area. Who's gonna see that unless they're parking there? It's just seemed like it-
Have you been to Three Akos yet?
Uh, yes.
Okay. I, I see that while we're trying to park at Three Akos, because I'm also parking next to Hall Street, sort of, which is also going to be that's transitioning into Paul's on Fifth.
Right, right.
So you're gonna be a gourmet food hall- So it's going to be a gourmet food hall, and the people that own Propagated Social House are doing that improvements. And that's in honor of the owner, Robert Chris Hall. He's been a fan of business for over a hundred years, so that's why they're calling it Halls on Fifth, to kind of honor that historical nature. But this is, this is just the beginning. We've got a couple other walls that we're, that we're looking at. We're going to see how these turn out with the artists, and if they're interested in coming in and doing other locations over in the city council. But I wanted you all to see what we're, what's going into downtown. Because there's, obviously, there's been quite new changes, new investments, new businesses coming in, inherent out and out. It's all a bit part of that, too. So I wanted you to see this.
Yeah, thanks. All right.
That's right.
I thought he'd come in here representing somebody else and make sure we denied it.